Mission meeting to order and go through a roll call. So Marla, if you could take us through a roll call.
Commissioner Bittner.
Here.
Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Jarrett.
Here.
Commissioner Monson. Commissioner Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Rich.
Here.
Commissioner Strifel. Commissioner Zurov.
Here.
Chairman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Marla. All right, quorum is established. We will move into the approval of the February 12th, 2025 minutes. These were in your packet agenda. If there are any changes that are needed, please call that out now or we can move into approving them.
Move to approve as presented?
Second.
Good, it has been moved to approve by Commissioner Zurov, seconded by Commissioner Rich, and all in favor of approving the minutes from the February 12th, 2025 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, minutes are approved. We have nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we will move into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is the Summit Point Second Subdivision Short Platte. And it looks like Marla will be taking us through a few details of this and then we'll open the public hearing and to allow the public to speak.
He's going to put that on the screen for me. Okay, good evening, Commissioner. It's just the public hearing for Summit Point Second Subdivision, and it is a short plat. It's, the petitioners are John and Sarah Wantenburg, and Toman Engineering is doing the engineering, and the location is Block Three and Four, Block Two, Summit Point Subdivision. Okay, the project is 2.05 acres. The petitioners request approval of Summit Point Second Subdivision, and I do pass recommendation to the Board of Burleigh County Commissioners. Notifications were in the Bismarck Tribune February 28th and March 7th. Surprising property owners were notified February 28th, and it was on the Burleigh County website on February 28th. John and Sarah approached Burleigh County because they purchased lots Three and Four, Block Two of Summit Point First, and they would like to comply, combine the two lots into one lot. Planning and Review Committee found no issues of concern for this subdivision. Staff findings, the subdivision fulfills the requirements of Article 33 of the Burleigh County's zoning ordinances. This subdivision is a short plat subdivision under Article 33, Section 12. The final plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All currents and concerns and corrections have been addressed. The zoning is a PUD. The subdivision is covered under the PUD and the covenants of Summit Point First Subdivision. This subdivision meets the goals and intents of Burleigh County Comprehensive Plan for the orderly development of Burleigh County. The petition meets all the administrative requirements of the Burleigh County zoning ordinances. Staff recommends approval of the final plat and giving a due pass recommendation to the Board of Burleigh County Commissioners. You can approve the final plat and give a due pass, approve it with conditions and give a due pass after recommendations, conditions are met. You can deny the final plat with reason or table the final plat for more information.
Okay, are there any questions for Marla? Yes, Commissioner Patrick.
Just a clarification, Marla. On the first page, you have 205 acres. Did you say it's 2.0?
It's 2.05.
Is that for both lots or individual each lot?
That's what the combined, I think, is of this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions yet? Commissioner Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marla. Is the intent they're going to build a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
They're going to combine them, and the house is going to be situated probably pretty close to the middle of the lot.
Commissioner Zurov.
Might be a really dumb question. So the Summit Point area and stuff, they've gone through a whole bunch of master planning, and I'm assuming they have other documents that have Summit Point First, Summit Point Second, Summit Point Third, with them coming in, and all this is a very simple lot combination. So it doesn't mess with any other master planning. Should it be called something different, like Wantenburg First or?
Well, then we run into subdivision, kind of within a subdivision. They can adjust the master plan. They've already adjusted it a little bit. So when they come for the second phase, it would be Summit Point Three.
Yeah, I just, for, I'm thinking ahead and like knowing that there's that master plan in place, I don't want, you know, all of a sudden this conversation to be like, oh, the, you know, 83 acres in Summit Point Second, and here John and Sarah are going, it's just our two, like, you know, or one, I guess, but.
Yeah, the next subdivision, whether, if somebody else comes along and wants to combine two lots, it would be Summit Point Three. And then when they go to the second phase of the master plan, it will be wherever we're at on the Summit Points. We're planning for that.
Just trying to avoid any, any future, you know, conversation about confusion and so.
Yeah. And that's why we also made the stipulation that they would be under the PUD and follow the covenants.
Okay. Perfect. Commissioner Conley, you had something?
Yes.
Well, maybe that answers the question right there, is why the PUD designation versus some of the residential designations. Is that just it, or are there other extenuating circumstances that when we get more of these come through that we have to have in the back of our mind as we make decisions?
Well, we gave it the PUD designation because it is a lot combination in the Summit Point First Subdivision, but the way Article 33, Section 12 is written, we do a short plat subdivision, so we're keeping the zoning the same under the PUD umbrella. And that's why we specified they had to stay under the PUD umbrella.
Okay, that's good for clarification. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Marla. Any other questions for Marla before she steps away? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Marla. We will open this public hearing on Summit Point Second Subdivision Short Platte. So if anyone would like to speak concerning this subdivision, please approach the lectern, tell us who we are, where you're from, and sign in. Anyone like to speak at this public hearing? And one last call, if anyone would like to speak, this is the last call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move into discussion and action on Summit Point Second Subdivision Short Platte.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay, it has been moved to approve by Commissioner Zurov, seconded by Commissioner Patrick, to approve this as presented. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bittner.
For the record, the applicant is a relative of mine, and I'm just pointing that out in case anybody thinks that we should have a discussion about conflict of interest or anything like that. I have no financial interest in it, but he is my nephew.
Okay, well, thank you for pointing that out. If anyone has any concern of that, we can.
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Bittner be allowed to vote.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Patrick and seconded by, we'll say, Commissioner Conley, to allow Commissioner Bittner to vote in this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, so we will, we will keep you in the, on the voting roll, Commissioner Bittner.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion on this, we will move into a vote on the motion to approve as presented the Summit Point Second Subdivision Short Platte. So Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote?
Okay, the motion is to approve the Summit Point Second Short Platte. Yes, vote means you agree. Commissioner Zurov.
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner.
Yes.
Commissioner Conley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rich.
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
All approved.
Okay, that approves, is approved, and we'll move to the county commission with a recommended, recommendation for approval. We'll move into our second public hearing of the night, Article Eight, Special Uses Solar Farm. This is a continuation of the February 12th, 2025 public hearing. I guess, is there anything that you would like to say before we continue this public hearing, Mitch, at all?
Commissioners, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
The, there have been some changes that I added.
Yes, we see that.
I know, a few in your packets, you go to the ordinance, the, basically, I included a off-grid definition, number eight, under Article, Section Two. Is it Section Two? Uh, Section I, Section One, cap, Roman numeral one. Eight is on-grid, off-grid solar systems and an active, an active energy solar system that converts solar energy directly into electricity. Unlike on-grid systems, off-grid systems do not connect to the, to the national utility grid. Basically, a simple definition. The other one are the size classifications under Section Roman numeral two, point one B. The size classifications were, we have no definition of residential, commercial, industrial. There are no definitions for that, for size-wise. It's basically just size contingent on the zoning. But these are sizes that are based on national averages. The residential is 1 to 20 kilowatts accessory use and connected to the existing load. Small, commercial is 20 to 50 kilowatts, and large, commercial is 50 to 100 kilo, megawatts. So it's, depending on the size, most homes in, in America are around 15 solar panels and they average 30, 30 kilowatts per day. So this is a conservative estimate. We, we don't, these are not restricting the size of these units. What they're doing is giving you a guideline to ask, all right, I want 1,000 kilowatts on my residential property here. So then you say, well, how is that going to fit into this property? Where are you going to place all these solar panels and light arrays? So it's kind of, gives you a guideline, gives me a guideline when we review these applications. It's not, like I said, it's not a maximum of 100 megawatts for a large commercial. We don't want to, we don't restrict any of them. So it's, it's just basically a guideline.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes, yeah, Commissioner Rich.
So the 20 kilowatt is plenty adequate for a very large home?
Yeah, the average, yeah, it's, it's like I said, I found it as a national average. It's, you know, these, you could probably have 50 kilowatts on there. It depends on, you know, the type unit, type system you buy. I mean, the more expensive ones could probably produce much more kilowatts in a much smaller area than that. These things are changing industry and so, but for us to consider this and to give it a guideline when you guys are up here and they want to do a large commercial solar system, and they say we're going to do 100 megawatts, well, that's a big, very large solar array.
Yes, yeah, Commissioner Patrick.
Mitch, I, you got clear, something in my mind probably isn't matching, but why do we have residential up in B and then down in C we exempt the rooftop mounted solar panels?
That's in the residential districts only. If they want to have ground-mounted in an accessory as an accessory unit or accessory use in a residential area, they can't. But that was discussed at the last meeting, and it was made by motion that you guys wanted to exclude solar arrays, rooftop mounted solar arrays in residential only.
I think where this fits in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mitch, is that you can have a residence in a, in a zoning that is not an R, a residence, an R1, R2.
Right.
You could have a residence in an ag zoning, and that would then fall into that residential 1 to 20, correct?
Well, we're talking two sections, two different sections here.
Well, it's, it's.
One is B.
The same thing, is that it's, it's called out under B, B, Roman numeral one, residential 1 to 20 KDWBAC, and then under C, the exemption, the exemption is rooftop-mounted solar panels in a residential district. So I think that's, it's, is that the difference between a residence and, and a residence in a residential district? I believe is, is that the difference?
The intent was to exempt residential houses from having solar panels on their roof mount, as roof-mounted units. So if you want to say all residential housing, if you want me to change that, that's certainly up to you.
I think just the question was, was just around if there's a residential sizing, but then we're exempting roof-mounted solar panels in a residential district, do we need, do we need the one, the, to call out the residential 1 to 20 if we're exempting it? I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure. Or is there, is there a, maybe a, an example of where that would, you could put it in, there would be something residential, but it wouldn't be in a residential district? I'm, I'm trying to kind of maybe draw, is there a, is there something there that's not covered?
Well, I think you, you don't need B, BI, I don't think you need it. I mean, that's very clearly, because you're exempting them.
B is just explaining the sizes. There's multiple sizes, levels, the way I understand it.
Yeah, Section B.
That's all it is, is just saying the size. If it's 1 to 20, it's, it's qualified as residential, and then if they're going to do a rooftop, they don't need to worry about a permit.
So you could, I guess, maybe with what you're saying, and I don't know, Mitch, if that's, if that's kind of the way this is written, is that the residential sizing could be used on a commercial building, but it's, it's a, you, you would just have that size, it's, it would be a residential size, but you potentially could put it on a commercial building, but then you wouldn't be exempted?
Well, I think it would be.
Right? No?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
It's exempts, only exempts residential districts from having solar panels roof-mounted. That's all it is.
Okay.
We're not talking about size, we're not talking about, it's, the, the solar panels on the roof only.
If it's, if it's on a residence and it's roof-mounted, not ground, not ground-mounted?
Not ground-mounted.
Correct, okay, okay, got it. Yeah, Commissioner Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mitch, if I had a residential rooftop one, I could go beyond the 20 kilowatts because I'm exempted under C?
Well, those, those, those are not, those are not maximum levels of kilowatts, megawatts, those are not maximum levels that you cannot exceed. Those are suggested levels when we review these special use permits. It's up to this board, because every one of these things are going to be different. You're going to have such a massive amount of differences in each one of these systems that you, we don't want to start reducing or eliminating, not eliminating, but putting a maximum amount on these systems, because if it's a smaller unit, smaller system, it creates more electricity, why would we limit it? It's the, what we're trying to do is, in these considerations, special use, is what is the effect on the neighbors? What is the effect on, on the property values and overcrowding and sort of thing?
Commissioner Conley, did you have something? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I think it was, is that with the exemption and things, is, it gives a guideline, but the beauty of the special use permit, it'll always be reviewed by either the sport or the county. And then I think Commissioner Jarrett was right, is, is, there's no fee associated with the residential, I believe, right?
For?
Under the exemption, they just.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't even have to get a permit.
Yeah, that's.
But.
So that's why I think it's written in here is to delineate that difference.
And it's roof-mounted only.
Right.
On a residence. Got it, yeah.
Mr. Chair, let me rephrase that. They, they would still need a building permit, because if they're mounting these on the roof and they're adding a load onto that existing roof, then they need, still need a building permit.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks for that clarification. That's definitely a lot clearer in my mind, definitely.
Okay, we clear on that?
I think so, yes.
We include a size classification for the community solar, a size classification for solar farms. Did not change anything on the site plan?
Chairman?
Yes, yeah, Commissioners Zurov, yeah.
Only thing I'm going to recommend, 120 is what I'm going to say.
Oh, sorry, which one?
On the site plan required.
Okay.
Digital copy, 1 to 20. That's going to be fine, and I'm going to say that scale is probably going to be fine in a residential application, but if you start getting into larger commercial stuff of 1 to 20, when you're talking, say, a thousand-foot by thousand-foot commercial farm.
Be one inch per 100 feet, so, yeah.
Right.
So I could.
Just, just, I, I'm just trying to save you a headache from having to flip from, because I, I know what 1 to 20 looks like when you start talking large, like, large-scale site plans, and.
Excuse me, it, it does say or larger scale.
Okay.
Be okay?
Yeah.
Will that impact through experience?
Personally, again, personal opinion, I don't like the or larger, because or larger can mean, oh, it's 1 to 200, or it's 1 to 10, because 1 to 10 is technically a larger scale. It shows things at a larger scale.
1 to 10 feet?
1 inch equals 10 feet is technically.
Larger than 1 to 20?
Yep. The higher the number, the smaller the detail.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just trying to avoid confusion.
Right. Okay, so, moving on, any other questions?
I'm just, I'm trying, I'm thinking of you in the future, Mitch, not right now.
You're, you're my hero, Brian, thank you.
Yeah, oh, now it's getting deep.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So on to page eight, the next changes, change minor is on item nine, additional standards in parallel with service provider. That was, I included that in, it wasn't in there last, that was pointed out by Light Source, I think.
Light Spring.
Light Spring. The other minor change is on, under section nine, point M. Additional conditions or specific allowances to this ordinance may be considered in the review and approval of special use permit. So that's basically saying that everyone, there's these things that comes in different, there's special conditions, special situations that, that we can't cover in the ordinance, but it's up to this board to evaluate on a, on a case-by-case basis and on their, on its own merit. Like, last, when he was talking about it, it was like having an exemption for areas that are swampy or nonusable ag land, that sort of thing.
All right, well, thanks for taking us through the, all those changes, and thanks for making those. Any other questions for Mitch before we continue with this public hearing? All right, seeing none, Mitch, thank you. We will, we will continue with the public hearing for the Article Eight, Special Uses Solar Farm, from the February 12th, 2025 public hearing. So if anyone would like to approach and speak on this matter, please approach the lectern, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and sign in. I see no one in the gallery, so I don't think there will be anyone, but next, I'll do a second call for anyone who would like to speak, and a final call for anyone who would like to speak on the public hearing regarding Article Eight, Special Uses Solar Farm, the continuation of the February 12th, 2025, 2025 public hearing. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move into discussion and action on the, on Article Eight, Special Uses Solar Farm.
I would move to approve with, just to mention, the extra underlining that you did that you didn't highlight. I think it does draw attention to some of those key derivatives and just might improve the quality of the read for people using it. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay, so it is moved for approval with the, with the changes shown by Commissioner Conley, seconded by Commissioner Patrick. Is there any discussion on the motion? With the, with the changes made, or with the changes that are shown, I guess, is, is what was the motion, yeah.
As presented, basically.
As, as presented. Being that there were changes from the, from the first part of the hearing to the second part of the hearing, so. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote?
Okay, the motion is approved with changes shown and as presented. Yes, vote means you approve. Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Thank you, Marla. That is approved, so it will pass to the county commission with a recommendation of approval. That can, that finishes up our public hearing agenda, but in other business, we do have a line item about non-access lines, and Mitch, if you could kind of introduce us to that, take us through some of the detail and.
Chair Agnew, before I get started, I was wondering if I could add to the, another item to the other business?
Sure.
Do you want me to present it now? The, at the last meeting, it was recommended to table a data center ordinance until June. I'd like to see if we could revisit, reconsider that or table it until April's meeting. There are many reasons for that.
Yep.
One of them is the, if we don't have an ordinance in place and there's somebody knocking at our door, we have to let them build. We can't stop them from building.
So I guess that, that is my question, is, is that if there is no ordinance called out in our, in our ordinances for a use or an accepted, what is it, allotted use or, or special use, either way, are, is our ordinance prescriptive, I believe is the term, where if it's not mentioned in there, then it's not allowed?
Right.
Or how does that work?
It's a spelled-out item, a specific item that is not in there. If it's, you know, well, wind tars are in there, but data centers, I believe, are coming, and there's some activity, some question about, you know, purchasing land here and that sort of thing, so it's, it's fine. But the idea is that, why did we need to wait till June when this ordinance that I presented last month, I thought was pretty well-written? It's pretty standard from a lot of other counties in the state. The only thing that we did not have on that was to define the different sizes of them, which, this is a large, for a large-scale data center, crypto-mining center. The smaller ones for residential, that can be addressed at a later date. The Senate bill, I can't think of it right now, 1239 or something, for the data centers did not go, did not pass the House vote, so it's going to go back to committee, but believe me, it'll be back. And so those are for residential use and, and commercial use. So that's where they were talking about allowing a data center in that, that is using more than 1 megawatt of power.
Okay, and I believe the reason that it was tabled, the, was because of items that were going on in the legislature, of, that while there may be changes and that, that could potentially make us want to reconsider things that we had in the ordinance or potentially negate the ordinance. that we had in the ordinance or potentially negate the ordinance. I, I believe that was, that was why it got tabled. But I guess maybe just back to my question, I just want to get, make sure I have the, the right answer here, is that if, if it's not called out as an, as a either acceptable use or a special use now, then, I mean, if you, you know, you say you've got, okay, there, there may be activity going on on this, that, that would tell me that it's, that, that it's not allowed in the county, correct, at all?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, no.
Currently.
It would cause problems for the county. If they came up here and knocked on our door for a building permit for an industrial-type building, and housed data centers, we would have a problem with that. We could, we could probably try to deny it, and then they have to appeal it, and then they take it to District Court, and they would see that Burleigh County is out of line here. It's, the idea is that those, those uses that are in that ordinance or the, the new legislative bill is not in this ordinance. That, that needs to be an entirely different ordinance. As for residential and commercial use, this is for large-scale data centers. And I, we can get to work on the residential smaller ones that the state legislator is, is looking at, which I intend to do. But I think that, that we, I thought it was a fairly well-written ordinance. It wasn't asking for too much, because many, many jurisdictions have identical ordinances to it. And so we're, I mean, it's up to you, Board. You want to table it till June, that's fine. I, I don't think we need to, because we can, we can visit those other concerns in June or, you know, May, whatever.
Okay, I, I appreciate the feedback, because that, that, that gets me, I guess, aligned. And I guess I had it in my head, is that if it's not, if it's not, now not called out in our ordinance, then it just wouldn't be allowed. So there's no, there's no risk if we would table it for that extended period of time. But if you're saying that there is a risk, then that changes my thinking, I know that. But I guess I'll just open it up to the board for kind of questions to Mitch, so I guess we'll start here. Commissioner Patrick?
Well, first of all, I don't have anything for Mitch. I would just say, I would be, I'd be receptive to bringing it back earlier with one qualification. And I talked to you, Mr. Chairman, about that before the meeting, is that if we have, Mr. Phillips comes back again, we would like his comments in writing before the meeting, so that we can review them without going through another two-hour discussion. And that's my comment.
Yeah. Commissioner Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mitch is right. I think if they, somebody comes up with a plan for a data center, we don't have any ordinance, we either give them a permit, or they might challenge it in court and whatnot, and being able to build it. So I, I, I think moving it up to April makes sense to me.
Commissioners are off.
Only, I guess, for full transparency on the question, I'll just ask the question, is there somebody immediately knocking on the door right now? Or have you, have you, have you had, have you had somebody in your office inquiring about getting a permit to build a data center?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bitner?
I make a motion to remove that from the table and move it up to the April meeting.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Commissioner Bitner and seconded by Commissioner Patrick to remove that from the, remove the, I guess it would be the motion to table the data center ordinance and move it up to the April meeting, or to get it on the April meeting agenda for this commission. Is there any discussion on that motion?
My question is, is what is the proper procedure for moving something up that was tabled?
Just, what were you?
Just do it?
That's, that's the motion.
That's it.
Yeah, that's the motion, remove it.
All right.
Remove it from the table is the motion to do that.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I just want to restate that I think that, again, if Mr. Phillips is going to come or anyone else, that they, number one, come with comments that are written, or get comments, written comments to us ahead of the, the hearing. And in addition, I think that we need to limit the amount of time that these people speak.
We definitely will be putting a time limit on, on, on these, these ordinance changes, so that we can not have the runaway train. Any other comments, any other discussion? And I think, you know, just what I, what I said before the motion, but as discussion on this motion, is that I guess I was under the impression that, that there, that this would not be allowed in the meantime. And it sounds to me like there, there is likely some, some potential loophole or way around that. So that definitely changes my mind.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That, that is a big legal question, but in my mind, if somebody came here and wanted to build, we, I'll just leave it where it is, right, you know, where it is. It's, that's a good legal question, and I'm, I'm not a legal scholar on this stuff, so it's, you know, it's, I've always been under this, understanding, excuse me, that if you don't have something on your books, it's difficult to stop it from happening, and to go proactive after the fact, too.
Okay.
Or reactive, basically, it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'll reiterate what I said last time at the last meeting, is that I would rather have something in place that we can adjust farther down the road. Do we, if we do want to change it, I think having something in place is better than having nothing in place. I guess, like I say, I'm, I am no legal scholar either, but I, I appreciate the, kind of maybe the scenario playing, or the scenario layout for me, that helps me kind of think of it in the, the right manner. So Commissioner Conley?
Well, I think it came, I mean, we listened to the gentleman for a long time, and I think it kind of came from a request from him, and we conceded to that request. But now, after further thought, I think this is the right call.
Yes, I guess one question would be, and, and I think just to put in people's mind, to get the, get them thinking, and we can do that when we, when we re-bring this up at a, at a hearing, is that what, what are the changes that we, you know, would want to make? And that's, that's always, always the question when we bring these things up at a, at a hearing. Or any consideration is that what are those, what are those changes? I know that we had a person here that was from the industry, and I think that's, that's great to educate us. I do also, on the flip side of that coin, will say that the industry doesn't write the regulations. The industry being regulated shouldn't be writing the regulations, but it's nice to have them here to educate us. So, you know, by no means is that, is that a plan to, to bring every one of those recommendations or thoughts into our ordinance. Maybe some, maybe none, maybe all, but that's, we will make that decision. Any other, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll just go into a, a voice vote on this. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, we will bring the data center consideration for the data center ordinance onto the April, the April agenda. All right, moving into other business, for the non-access lines. Mitch, if you could take us through a little bit of what your, what your thoughts are on this?
Commissioners, non-access lines are selectively drawn on a plat to limit high-speed, high-traffic-volume roadways and at intersections to lower traffic accidents. County staff reviews these non-access lines locations and make recommendations on the plat to the County Commission for their approval, for the County Board's approval. Once non-access lines are recorded on a plat, it becomes, it currently requires the owner to replat the allowed access to a new location. Staff's intentions are to be able to make an administrative change to non-access lines on the plat while not compromising the important safety concerns of the plat or the non-access lines themselves. Minor changes to non-access lines can be completed in a less complicated method by use of a resolution and affidavit, which is in your packet, copies are in your packet, which would proceed as follows, $250 non-access line fee, applications reviewed by the county planning and zoning staff, county highway department, and additional staff as needed. After the petition is presented at a public hearing to the Planning Commission, the resolution and affidavit are submitted to the County Board for their approval. Auditor Stampson signs the affidavit, and documents were recorded by the county staff and filed with the original subdivisions. Using this method policy would, would shorten the time and reduce costs for application, surveying, and recording. So there's a list of some of the properties that were affected by the platted non-access lines. You may recall the, I think it was Riverside, it might have been Riverside. It's down on, on South Ford Junction, it had four lots in a row. That's, those, those plats are important that we have non-access lines, because they, they combine the access points, two lots to two lots. And so it's, it's important to have stuff like that drawn on, on plats. But on the, on this, it's basically if somebody comes in, such as the Riverside Island Road property. In that situation, the surveyor made a mistake of the location of the, of the line. And they discovered it after the fact, after it was recorded, and they wanted to move it over about 10, 15 feet. Well, that would have taken a plat, a replat. So this, in this case, county staff would be able to review that and would make their recommendations to the County Board. So that's where we're at with, with this. So the motion is to advise the County Commission on staff and recommendations to allow administrative changes to the platted non-access line.
Mitch, when, when we say minor changes, you know, what would you consider minor? Is there, is there some sort of a quantitative, you know, I guess, number that we would want to put on there? Whether it's a foot measurement, or if it's a percentage, I don't know. Does, does that make sense or not, when we say minor changes? I guess is there, do we need to qualify, you know, qualify what is that, what is a minor change and what's not? Or is that, is that okay?
Well, I would, I would, it would mostly be on a singular, singular application. It wouldn't be for an entire subdivision. It'd be basically one lot, they would like to move it because they can't drive through, they want to have access to this accessory building from this point. And so it's kind of, it's not any major change, it would be the entire plat or multiple access lines at one time. I can guarantee you that the county highway department's not going to want to do a major change on these access lines without a plat, a new, a replat.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mitch?
You guys any comments?
And we have agreement. Any questions for Mitch? Okay, seeing none. Is there any discussion or action that we would like to take on this? Yeah, Commissioner Patrick?
I'd move approval. Well, afterwards, I'll indicate why.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so it's been moved for approval by Commissioner Patrick, seconded by Commissioner Conley. To, and the, the motion is, the, what the action requested is, that is presented here, to advise County Commission and staff on recommendations to allow administrative changes to a platted non-access line. Any discussion on the motion?
My, my reason for, for moving approval is because simply if I had a lot, and I talked with Marla earlier about this, and she described it, what happens is, I've got 10 feet basically on each side of my lot, which is access. And if I wanted to move it over here, because I want to park, in this case, it was a motorhome, I could do that, you know. And, and as long as the county engineer, which it already says in here, is, is reviewing it and saying it's okay, there shouldn't be a problem.
Yes. Any other discussion on the motion? I, I, I definitely like this. This is a, a nice thing to where we're not forcing people to go back fully through the process and spend a bunch of money and waste a bunch of time on something that doesn't, I don't believe requires it. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, you know, Marla, why don't you take us through a roll call vote, just for old times' sake?
Okay, the motion was advise County Commission and staff on recommendation to allow administrative changes to platted non-access lines. Yes, vote means you agree. Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, was that a yes?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All approved?
Okay, the, the change to the, the change regarding non-access lines is approved. And we'll go to, that will go to the County Commission for final approval, correct? Or, okay, so it will go to a public hearing at, at the County Commission, or not? For this? No, no, okay. The non-access one, correct, okay, sounds good. Any further business, any that anyone would like to bring up? Is there a second? Okay, all right, Commissioner Zurov moved to adjourn, Commissioner Conley seconded it.
I think we need a roll call vote.
Is there any, is there any opposition to adjournment? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.